The result of the P1 ADA was actually lower than the projected ADA during the first interim budget. Also, under the federal revenue, the change is the net impact of a slight increase in federal revenue by approximately $66,000 in Title III LEP grant. Also, we received, there's also slight budget adjustment in our state revenue, and the change is primarily due to the increase in our Business Academy grant by $41,000. We also received an additional revenue under local revenue for our Ed Technology K-12 voucher program. And this type of local revenue is actually typically budgeted conservatively, and we adjusted, and adjusted the revenues as we received them. For the expenditures, the salaries and benefits, we have numerous small budget increases and decreases in this category, and the debt budget adjustment is a net decrease of $64,000 in expenditures. For our books and supplies, it's actually a reclassification of the technology supplies, expenditures from supplies to capitalized asset. We also have a slight increase in our services category in the amount of $31,000. Under capital outlay, again, it's a reclassification for our technology upgrades. And the, there's also a slight increase in our other outgo and indirect cost, which is associated with our federal and revenue, revenue increases.
So, the next page shows the restricted portion of the general fund, and I'm not gonna go through that anymore, but on the fund balance, Chris. Bring it back, yeah. I'm just wanna emphasize that the fund balance, yeah, that one, there's a slight difference of negative 92,044. And then for the restricted portion, which is the restricted categorical programs, there's a slight positive of 100,993. So, we wanna talk about the components of ending fund balance. As we know, even though we're showing that there's a 22.8 million dollar balance, there are things that you need to set aside and not be available for operational expenditures. For example, the revolving cash of 20,000, the legally restricted categorical programs, which I showed, you know, the page before this, it's 2.4 million dollars. Designated for economic uncertainties with the district, our size, we are required to set up, set aside 3%, which is 5 point, almost 5.7 million dollars. Then the board set aside another 2%, and that's 3.8 million. Textbooks, there's a set aside of 1 million for the curriculum department. And then the unappropriated balance is 9.8, which represents about 5.2% of our total expenditures, bringing the total to 22.8 million, which is only about 12% of the total expenditures that we have. So, part of the Ed Code 42131 and the AB 1200 requirement is that the district should present a multi-year projection every time we present the interim reports. And this is needed so that we can show the state that the district can substantially afford the expenditures, not just for the current year, but the next two succeeding fiscal years as well. Now, this page, I have presented this to you during the governor's proposed budget, but I just wanna emphasize again, for the revenue limit or the local control funding formula, the LCFF, the target funding, there's a difference of 581,000 from the projection during the first interim report and the second interim report. But then for the LCFF base, there's downside of 2.8 million dollars unfortunately, and the supplemental and concentration grant, another negative 1.9, for a total negative of 4.7 million dollars. So, that's, that's, you know, that's very substantial. The COLA has a minor difference, 1.11, it increased to 1.48%. Unfortunately, the gap funding had decreased to 49.32%. One-time discretionary fund, the governor proposed a $48 for ADA, and that amounts to about $767,000. For projected enrollment, we are projecting a decline of 202, and then for the average daily attendance, or ADA, is negative 189. So, again, this is a chart that will show the rising pension cost for both classified and certificated employees. So, STRS rates are increasing, there's a column from 2013, '14 to 2019, '20, and the same thing with COVID-19. So, for those years alone, there's a projected increase of the cost to, by 12.18 million dollars. For the combined projection, these are the three-year projections. So, if you look at '16, '17, revenues at 190.7 million, expenditures by 189.9, giving an ending balance of 22.8. Then it goes back to the second, or it rolls over to the next year. The positive, revenues of 186, and the negative of 192 for the expenditures, shows a deficit spending of 6.4, which means that the ending balance is now down to 15.5 million dollars. Going to '18, '19, the same process, the LCFF target rate a little higher, but still there's a negative spending of 891,000, and then the fund balance is now down to 13.87 based on the current year's projections of expenditures and revenues. Next. So, looking at the three-year components of the fund balance, I'm not gonna read all of them, but if you will see the unappropriated, which is second to the last, it goes down from 5% of the total expenditures, 3% to the following year, '17, '18, and then '18, '19, 2% at 4.1 million dollars. And then the total fund balance is down to 7% of the total expenditures for about 13.8 million. And again, these are, you know, projected based on the governor's proposed budget in January. By May revise, we are all expecting or hoping that, you know, the outlook will be more positive, and these numbers will increase accordingly. So, as I've mentioned in earlier, there are three kinds of certifications and staff, district staff is recommending that the board approves a positive certification, because based on these assumptions, the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the current year and the next two succeeding years. Any questions? It's the same thing.
Are we hoping for hope's sake, or is there some reason to hope? Is there, are there some indicators which might lead people to believe that May is gonna be more positive?
Well, the forecast from the legislative analyst office is more positive than the governor's proposals. So, usually, the legislative analyst office is more conservative. So, you know, seeing that we are, you know, more positive, we are, now school district are hopeful that, okay, you know, maybe the governor's proposal will be more positive in May.
So, I find the deficit spending to be alarming. Did that number go up?
Yeah, and actually, it's the drop, the substantial drop in the gap funding rate in '17, '18 attributed to that deficit spending. Because as you can see in the, that previous slide, it was about $5 million loss in revenue, not loss, but a drop, decrease in revenue in 2017, '18.
Right, and I see we're still projecting low enrollment. So, you're anticipating that at about 202 students, 189 students?
Well, looking at birth rates, we project out in outward years, and that's what we projected for this year. If you wanna add to that, but...
So, I guess, I guess my comments would be then, how are we gonna get a handle on the deficit spending? Or do you feel that things are okay at this point? I know we have a positive ending fund balance, but I'm concerned about ongoing. I'm really concerned. And I know we have really good reserves, which I appreciate that the board, you know, did come together around that, but there is some concern.
Well, we have started, and we will continue reviewing all our expenditure levels and the revenues and the attendance as well. It's good to note, although this is not the solution, that the state allows the school district that if it's declining enrollment, we can use the prior year's ADA, you know, for funding, so that will help a little bit. On the expenditure size, I mean, cabinet, you know, has been, we have been discussing about looking at the expenditures, not necessarily cutting or laying off for sake of it, but really making sure that we are efficiently operating, you know, in the sense that we will review, you know, our policies and procedures, you know, the staffing ratios and all those things to come up with a more, I would say, balanced budget.
Have we put on hold discussions on the computer infrastructure, or is that ongoing the considerations of moving ahead on that?
Well, as, technology is very important, so that to the extent that we can afford replacing some items, for example, then we would do that. But definitely, we cannot, we are not able to, like, say, change everything, you know, district-wide right away because of the lack of funding. But we're setting aside some money for technology as well.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
In regards to recruitment, would that be an issue? I received a link today from Pittsburgh Unified, and they're attending college campuses out of state. I think that this should be something we should consider.
So, our budget here in Antioch, which was graciously done through the LCAP, is about a $10,000 budget. We are attending quite a few. We have looked at some options of going out of state, mostly to the colleges that came and recruited up at our Ucan. But right now, I don't have the schedules, but we do need to look at, you know, doing some out-of-state. We have added a few places into our recruitment, and I can say Ms. Phillips is spending many Saturdays at job.
A lot of yourself.
At a lot of recruitment fairs. And we've tried to go some places in addition that have beep clads and so forth, so as we're doing the dual immersion program. But right now, I have not scheduled to go out of state, and I will tell you to do that would be a little bit tight on my budget. I'd have to be talking to Teresa over here to do that.
Okay, but interject, but there's another option would be Skype as well. We've done that before.
And we do do Skype interviews, I'm sorry.
Skype for out-of-state.
Yes, and out of country, although that's gonna be much more difficult.
Have we done out-of-state in the last few years?
It, there was not out-of-state before I got here, no. We did do some recruitment, and we did get some music teachers from out-of-state last year, quite a bit, but we haven't, I wouldn't say we've done a full out-of-state recruitment in the last few years.
And one other suggestion, Fairfield is recruiting on Saturdays, so they do that about three times a year, and they've had wonderful outcomes from that. So, that's a suggestion.
So, I do wanna make another comment about projected enrollment. I know surrounding school districts are increasing their enrollment, and so they have a lot of bonds and things that were passed. So, I'm really hoping that we can stop the bleeding with our enrollment, because I think that our, because of the ADA funding, our district is very dependent on the ADA funding, and so we can't pretend that that's not true. And so, I'm hoping that there would be some solutions coming up for the deficit spending, and of course, not in the form of laying off teachers, and, you know, and just finding some really viable solutions. But I think we should definitely be concerned of, you know, with our enrollment and how other districts are increasing, and ours is decreasing. It's just, just a comment.
Yeah, and there is a lot of planned development, I think, that's going to, over the years, Antioch, the way the development happened, we grew very quickly, we, this is something that we expected, given that we had a hard time keeping up with the building of homes, those homes have not all turned over, and when they have, it has always been to school-aged children. Much of the families that moved in when we had the big boom in Antioch were school-aged children, and it's looking like some of those homes are turning over because our enrollment actually is not decreasing in some, in most of the early years. So, we're seeing kind of the big, what we expected to go out one end is starting to move up in the other end, so...
And in addition, the analysis that School Works did in relation to the developers' fee increase, they're saying that in the next five years, they're seeing an upward trend. So, but you know, for purposes of conservatism, we're not including that in our projection yet.
Madam Superintendent, if you could refresh my memory, the meeting we attended, Oakley-Brentwood, what was their report on their population, do you remember that?
Actually, I'm trying to recall which district it was, but I believe that Liberty had lower.
That's what I remember, yeah.
Enrollment than they had projected, and the same was true of Brentwood. So, I think their growth pattern is now getting where ours may have been five, six years ago, starting to trend, so, yes. Is that your recollection?
Yes, yes, that's what I recalled. Pardon? Oakley, yeah, right.
Oh, please, go ahead. Wow.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
To follow up on what I think Walter was talking about, we have a, if I remember correctly, a $15 technology problem with infrastructure, not computers, it's the infrastructure. And this is before you were here, so, is that what you were talking about?
Yes, exactly.
So, how is that reflected in the budget? This, that's not in this budget here. Because we have $22 million, and I know we have at least 15 million that we need. So, maybe at some point, and I'll mention it again in future agenda items, but we need to look at the budget, how it relates to what we're gonna do with this money, and how we can get it in play as quickly as possible, because, hoarding, that's not a good word, saving money, having it on the books and putting it into, you know, working tools would be better.
I agree, and I think if Mr. Gangler was, this evening, he's of our technology, he and I spoke last week, just kind of where are we with moving this forward? He feels confident that we are moving forward. Our internet speed, you might be able to speak to this, Chris, I don't wanna put you on the spot. We've taken steps to build some redundancies that we didn't have, and that's why you're gonna see that our ending reserve is going down, is because we are spending that on a lot of the infrastructure that we need to, using the one-time monies that we receive. Because we don't wanna use anything that's not, that, anything but one-time monies if possible.
And I believe some of them are Band-Aids, we do have a problem.
Oh, absolutely. And we can give you an update at the next, at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? We are now moving to, well, 11B we've handled, Antioch Charter Academy, 11C, pardon me? Oh, I'm sorry, on, that's right, second interim report. Yes, do I hear a motion to approve the second interim report? Moved by Gibson Gray, Trustee Gibson Gray?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Vinsone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Second interim report, item A carries unanimously. Item B has been handled. Item C, appointment of Mary Roach to the Personnel Commission.
As I stated earlier, we had our public hearing on the appointment of Ms. Roach, and I would ask the board to take action to approve her this evening, so our commission can be back up to three members.
So moved, moved by Mr. Hat?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Gray, Gibson Gray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item C. Item D, Office of Administrative Hearings, OAH, agreement case number, heading in 311, whatever it is.
Move approval.
Motion to move approval, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number D. Item 12, items for discussion by board. Discussions on, first item of discussion is alternate board meetings with city, yeah, at Antioch City Council chambers, brought forward by Trustee Vinsone.
This was recommended by a parent, because a lot of them would like to know what's going on at the board meetings, and would like to have the option to view what happens at a board meeting via online TV or some other recorded method. So, I know we were going to look at cost, do we have a chance to look at cost, Superintendent Tonello, of what it would cost us, or?
No, I was waiting for direction this evening, if that's what the board would like, I'm happy to do so.
Misunderstood that. Okay, I don't know how other board members feel, but this is a public request. I think we've had, we've discussed this off and on for some time now, if the board members would remember.
Are we talking about having a meeting here, the next meeting at the City Council, because they can televise things, or are we gonna televise meetings here, or, I mean, I'm not quite clear of what this means.
The suggestion from the community was that we have an, have occasional meetings at the Antioch City Council chambers, so we, so that we could be televised. And I don't know if that means, like, specific meetings of what they would wanna see, I didn't get specifics, but some of the parents are requesting, this was some of the parents' requests, and it has been circling. Now, the other, the only other thing I would say is that I know that we just spent 15K on cameras for DeValle students, and I know that some of DeValle, DeValle High School students do a fine job with recording and recording different meetings and events. I've seen them at the LCAP meetings recording, so I don't know if that would also be an option, once we have our server capability able to handle the load. That may be an option, but anyway, just putting it out there.
Yes, Mr. President. Quite a few districts are being televised, we're one of the few there or not, so I think that's a good suggestion.
My own inclination would be not to discount Antioch City Council or any of the schools, Black Diamond or wherever we thought of, but I would first like to exhaust the possibilities of here, what, what the technical difficulties would be, the obstacles, the cost. Heard some statements said it would be an easy room to work, to work off of, but I don't know what the veracity of that statement is. So, if our technology department maybe had an opportunity to give us some pros and cons of this environment here.
Can I just mention something? For, on the agenda is, the only item is meetings with Antioch City Council chambers, not the rest of it, so we'd probably need to put that on a future agenda item. We would have to contact the city of Antioch, excuse me, and find out if they're, if the council chambers open, how much it costs. I think when they do debates, it's like $1,000, so we'd have to do that, notify the public. So, those are the logistics I think we need for tonight's discussion, and then a future discussion, where are we with technology for videotaping on our own?
So, basically, I, I need to know if there's a consent of the board to have staff look into, all right, to look into the cost and availability of using the Chamber of Commerce for some of our meetings.
No, City Council.
City Council.
Close.
It's past seven.
We can start with that. Yes.
Okay, can I see a knot of heads?
Yes, I like it.
Okay.
I think it's just gonna keep coming up.
Get the information. Thank you.
Okay, we'll finally get to the bottom of that.
Yes.
Next item is governance training. We're going to have a resolution a little later on in this meeting about permanent policy, but this would be a policy to finish out this year, since we didn't really have an existing policy nor a budget that was left very intact.
Correct. Can I just clarify on that, too? It's not a policy, it's just board member trainings that they would like to go to before the budget ends, so we wouldn't have to put a policy in.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't mean policy, yeah. I meant we're going to be voting on policy, yeah.
Yeah, we do have a policy coming.
Right, but you said we, policy for finish out the rest of the year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, yeah, we didn't, okay, sure.
So, I think this was brought forward by Trustee Vinsone and Sawyer White, would either one of you like to?
So, one of the things that Trustee Sawyer White brought up is that none of us have really gone to Masters in Governance Board Training. I actually thought I had gone to the board training with all of the CSBA conferences that we do, but when I contacted CSBA, they said, "No, we don't offer this during some of our conferences." I was actually surprised, because some of the classes that we get are very informative and very beneficial, but I didn't know that this is a completely separate class. And I do know that board trustees all over in most of, and almost all of the districts have taken this training. So, it's a unique perspective, and thank you to Trustee Sawyer White for pointing out that we hadn't ever gone, so my interest was piqued.
I would echo that appreciation, and say that, add that there's also an institute for new board members, which is a little different than the Masters', and I believe that's the one that is coming up here in Burlingame and Anaheim. Burlingame, Anaheim, and Reading, I think are the three places remaining on this year's calendar. And that has four components, including budget, and it seems to be quite exhaustive, that seems to be a great foundation, and that's generally given to new board members in their first year or first term.
First term.
So, I think that's what we might be looking at for the remainder of this year.
And then board governance would be next year, Masters in, Masters in that program?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President. The first, there's steps you take, the initial step is new board members, superintendent, I spoke with Superintendent Anel in regards to, there's another one we found in Los Angeles. And then the second step is Master of Governance. You have four years to take a total of four courses, and then you can, you have to take them in sequential order, so that's the one I was referring to. But Master of Governance is for all board members, and to take all five courses.
Is, is there an interest, though, in board members taking this Institute for New Board Members, which is coming up end of this month in Burlingame, and I think in Reading, and then in April in Anaheim?
Right.
So, there is, there is an interest there?
Yes, I spoke with Anaheim, I'll give some, you have a little more time. And also in addition to, there's a free seminar, the reason why I'm declining Burlingame, Legislative Action Day, which you actually can meet, you know, the politicians in Sacramento. So, I'm scheduled for that on March 21st. So, that would be a whole week of driving to Sacramento and then Burlingame, the same week.
Yeah, I thought the Burling, okay.
Yeah, so that's a little bit.
I am registered for that one, but I thought the Burlingame one was also the 24th?
That's the same week.
Right.
Yeah, that's a little much.
Madam Secretary?
You would need to spend the night, it's Friday, Saturday, Burlingame.
Legislature.
No, that's one day, that's correct.
One day.
Right, but it's the whole week, so we have to drive to Sacramento and to Burlingame, and the whole, entire week, there's three conferences.
So, the, I think the Legislative Day One, I think I signed up for that some time ago, and then later, I think, I'm glad we had other board members sign on, but I think the, I thought the Burlingame One was MIG, had a portion of MIG, but it's completely separate, huh?
There's more than one conference going on in Burlingame and CSBA at the same date.
Got it, I'm gonna, okay.
So, the new board member, how much? So the new board member, how much is that? The one that you would, you're asking to go this year, Ms. Sawyer White?
I calculated, I sent the email to superintendent.
I have it.
Three hundred and twenty-five dollars of them.
How much?
Three hundred and twenty-five.
Per, per person, okay.
There's one complication there. Some of the hotels, I understand, are full from what Madam Secretary found out. Is that true, Mrs. Belachi? Did you check on hotel availability yet?
Yes, Anaheim is booked out, sold out.
That particular hotel?
It's the start of spring break for a lot of schools, so there's hotel availability in the area, it's very scarce. But as a suggestion, when I book you for the CSBA conference, I book six months in advance because of the crowd and the size. Last I checked, one day last week when our president asked, there were still rooms available on March 24, 25.
For Burlingame?
Burlingame, I haven't, that was then. But the Sheraton, excuse me, Anaheim was sold out.
So this is all a hypothetical because I have no crystal ball on what the consensus of the board is going to be tonight. But if we do have consensus to move forward and allow this in our budget, obviously, probably we want to move on it immediately because of hotel availability.
I, I would think that we had a discussion a while back and approved one class that you were interested in, which could obviously be this class that you're talking about, correct?
In Anaheim?
I think originally with Sandra Feller or something like.
Right, that was governance.
Right, governance.
Yes, right, we missed it.
Yeah, and I agree, because of the very fact that we already sort of agreed and that we didn't have a real policy and we didn't really ever sit down and discuss how many board trainings could a person go to in a year, what the budget would be. I feel that, I feel perfectly fine with people finishing this year out by going on training.
But on this one, it's a little bit different. It's not in Burlingame, there's air flight, so that's why I'm trying to get to the pricing first, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead.
So you're probably going to fly there, how much is a flight to?
Two hundred and two dollars.
Two oh two, and your hotel, just best guess, what was Sheraton going to be?
Ninety, ninety dollars a night.
And how many nights would you be staying?
Two nights with Stephanie.
Pardon?
This is with Stephanie, this is superintendent and new board member training.
But you wouldn't be sharing a room, I'm just trying to figure the price. So let's say two hundred for the hotel. Okay, that's okay, and then are you going to rent a car?
Yes, that was twelve dollars a day.
So how many days?
Two days.
Okay, so it's twenty-four. Just want to know how much we're looking at and if multiple board members want to go. So I'm not good at math, I'm a. Carry on with the next part, I'll, I'll come, I'll way back in.
So I do know that for the Burlingame one, early registration was two forty-nine, late registration is two seventy-four. So I don't know what the total would be, but I had already decided that if I were to do one, it would be Burlingame. And I would be sacrificing a workday on Friday as a contractor, so that's a huge sacrifice.
So if Anaheim, if just one person wanted to go, it's seven fifty-one?
Oh, for one person, seven fifty-one?
So if a second person were at four, you know, fifteen hundred, so that's all I needed to know. Ms. Anello, you weren't planning on going, so there's no expense for you, correct?
To the Anaheim?
I'm sorry, if the superintendent attends, it's free for her.
But she would still have to have a hotel room and all that.
Right, she doesn't have to pay the three.
Yeah, but she has to get their airfare all done, so.
And I'm happy to check my calendar and definitely if it's open, I'd be more than happy to attend.
So the figure we're coming up with is about fifteen hundred?
For, if, for, yeah, two went.
For, for two people.
And we have no budget for it, so it would be out of budget.
That's regrettable, but I would move that we accept it. I would hope that that's the consensus of the board.
So I'm hearing that you'd like to approve travel and conference for Ms. Sawyer White, Ms. Vinsone, and possibly if my schedule allows it, for up to fifteen hundred dollars? Is that what I, the direction?
From my perspective, no.
Okay, and Mr. Hack?
Yep.
Oh, sorry.
That's a new discussion because originally we had talked, one person taking one class, and now we're talking three people taking one class at a different location. And you know, various expenses that were not, you know, in the mission discussion.
Three people or two people?
Well, if Stephanie goes.
So you are possibly.
That's up to the board.
On your calendar, you don't know what this.
Whatever the direction.
So actually, I do remember when we had the initial discussion that we were, and I think Diane brought it up, that we were all going to have, make it sure that if one person went, that it, that it would be fair for, to make the opportunity available to others. Now, at that time, we weren't necessarily looking at anything that included a different city. At that time, we were looking at Burlingame, but I'm okay if, you know, the opportunity is, you know, to be someplace else with, with that specific training.
And I guess from my perspective, we're looking at three thousand, a board policy's coming up and we'll discuss it then, but three thousand per year per board member. I'm just not understanding why it has to be now, why we can't wait until we actually have the money and, and then each board member can decide how they want to spend the three thousand dollars. So to me, waiting a few months isn't critical, but that's my opinion.
I received the letter in December in regards to the training, so time, I feel, is the essence to attend. I, you have to plan your schedule, travel, and mainly all these conferences are out of, out of the area. And that's why I feel as a new board member, I want to be able to learn and to be trained.
The Institute for New Board Members won't, from my understanding, I called CSBA, said that they don't foresee it being offered until after the next new year, nine months from now. So because of that, again, I would say we should approve this.
Yeah, but this is not, she's, she's asking to go to the masters of government, she's the introductory. Are you talking about the one in Anaheim?
The one in Anaheim is the Institute for New.
New board members, yeah. So.
Institute for New and First Term Board Members, which is generally offered in December, January, after an election. So this is the last shot at it for this year.
Oh, so it would be for this year and then?
For this year.
And then the following year, this would be out of the way?
Right.
Yes, yes.
And then it would come at the beginning? In nine months, it'll be nine months from now, whatever.
So I'm hearing that three of you support this?
For sending one or two, I, I'm not understanding.
I heard up to fifteen hundred dollars for conference and travel for Ms. Sawyer White, Ms. Vinsone and myself.
Then it would be another add-on?
Yes, schedule allows.
I believe we have three members supporting.
I'm fine with it also.
Yeah.
And will board members be arranging their own travel and arrangements since we really don't necessarily have the staff? That we used to in the superintendent's office?
Well, and on top of that, I think, I don't think we really had a precedent on these, of the secretary doing this, other than the annual CSBA, I believe, is the only thing that you've systematically done, because all five of us usually go to that. So I, I don't, I don't think it should be put on you to, to do this.
I thank you for that, but there's too many ifs with other people's money because I think the hotel rates have gone up, or hotel is sold out. If the rate has gone up, I would feel very uncomfortable spending a board member's money on not, on what was asked me to do.
I would think if we're going, if we're going to do this, it should go through a central.
I agree.
Entity, which would be you, I guess. So everybody's on the same page and you can work out whatever the details are, but at least everybody's on the same page.
I'd be happy to submit the information.
Right, I, I, maybe I'm not being clear. It's not the information, but what you get on the website, because I've been in the same piece of it. It might say this hotel, it might say this rate, but they only block a certain amount for the conference at that time. By the time I go in to book, those rooms are gone, the rate's been increased by a hundred dollars, it's sold out, and there I am.
If, if the board is going to fund, you know, basically these classes, which I really have no objection to, I think it needs to come through the district in some kind of coordinated manner that everybody's on the same page of hotel rates, transportation, whatever. There should be some, a coordinator.
So is there going to be an approval of overtime? Sorry. That's the other, not, not to be, I, I just, I'm looking at the, the taxing on staff that's down quite a bit, what we used to have in the superintendent's office when we didn't arrange conference and travel necessarily.
I, I agree with you and I, Mrs. White has offered to do it on her own. I'm sure Mrs. Vinsone wouldn't have a problem. I think it is easier for them to do it. Tell Nancy what it is, if, you know, and, and if there's a problem, you can get to me if you, if you have an issue and say, my God, it's a thousand dollars a night, not that it's going to be at the hotel, I'm sure it's going to, we'll find something.
And I can personally help with all of the reimbursement forms and all of that. We can, I'm happy to meet with you and, and show you kind of what forms to fill out and, and navigate your way through that. So.
So we won't have a central location for all of this, we're going to individually process this. Because I, I do agree with trustee Hack that we should have, depending on what it is, I think would give us a better tracking mechanism of what board members are doing and what trainings they're doing if it's in a central location. I think it just gives us better.
All of the reimbursements would certainly come through one central location. But that's the little board.
Well, and it was seven fifty-one, so I think part of your recommendation, since I'm not part of it, if you want, would be to not exceed eight hundred dollars. That's a little bit of a padding in case it goes up, but seven fifty-one is what I calculated based on the information, but you don't want somebody, not that you guys would, book a suite. So maybe I would. But anyway, so that would be a recommendation.
It would be very cumbersome for Mrs. Belachi to be figuring, you know, oh, I wonder what flight they want.
Right.
I wonder what tax, you know, what, what rented car they want. I, I just think CSBA is one thing, I think this thing is something each board member can handle.
And if you remember, I think you, even with CSBA, you all book your own flights because Southwest only gives you back the credit. And then you could have the credit and if you changed your flight or anything and then the district, I would be on the hook. I, I personally won't do that with my credit card.
And the other thing is, as, as we go and we look at the new board policy, if we have whatever the figure turns out to be, even two thousand dollars to spend, and I decide I don't want to go to CSBA, but I'd like to do five Sacramento trainings, I mean, it's an awful lot to ask any staff person to keep track of what I want to do.
Very confusing, yeah.
But we can always provide updates when, if the board wanted, on what each board member has spent to date, if that's something that you would want. Would be fairly easy.
Yeah, I think that's a good compromise.
It is, updates.
Okay.
Excuse me, is, is my understanding, the conferences are going to be billed on a PO. That alleviates one expense on us for reimbursement.
Do you know how other districts manage all of this?
The PO or the administrative assistant does the arrangement.
No, I don't really have a problem with the fee.
I have found in recruitment, I'm going to be honest, most hotels will not take a PO from a school district, I have to put it on my card.
No, not a hotel, I'm in reference to C, it, these are all California School Boards Association.
Yeah, the conference, but the hotels won't.
Yeah, no, it would be a PO for the conference.
A PO takes two to three weeks to work through the system and your timing is of essence.
As far as going forward, I think the fees, she's right, it should be borne by the district and then we get reimbursed for the, you know, if you, if you want. But, but we should book our own airfare, hotel and car rental and anything else.
So if I'm hearing correctly, it sounds like that's a good compromise? If, if the board were able to sign up just for the conference and you would arrange your own travel and other arrangements and do reimbursement, correct?
Yes, and, and in this circumstance, it's not going to work to have a PO. We're never going to get it in time, it's much too late, it has to be billed, somebody has to.
Or it could be put on the district credit card.
What is the date we're looking at for the?
For the, just the date, just the registration.
No, for the event, what's the date for the?
Yes, we could do the registration on a.
Okay.
Yes, we can have that.
Is the?
Yeah, what is the date?
Thirty-first and first, I believe, of March?
Of April or March?
March, March thirty-first.
Burlingame, which one are you referring?
No, the one that you all are going to Anaheim, what is the date?
I thought you were all going to.
Yeah, it's.
March thirty-first.
No, this, this is.
Thirty-first and first.
Yes.
We can work with you on that.
Okay, let me see what I said Anaheim.
Okay, thank you for working.
Why not, how to hope to Anaheim?
Thank you.
Hopefully the new policy will make it much clearer and we'll just have a permanent policy. Velma Wilson on item number 12.
Good evening. You know, it just baffles me with all of this, because it, what concerns me is, you know, a person that do travel myself, timing is of the essence. And I think that when we just got done talking about deficit spending, we talked about budget, we talked about not having money, I think that all goes into play because now we're talking spending extra money because of timing. And Crystal, no disrespect or anything of that nature, yes, I know you're new, but you have four years to sit on this board, and I think that, look at the schedule of when they're going to offer this again, and maybe look at it a later time, that a schedule can be cohesive enough to where we can look at a better timing just for travel-related expenses, especially when you're talking about going to Southern California, because I can tell you right now, that is the hardest spring break, and I'm having travel that typically would cost somebody traveling to Anaheim at a hundred dollars, a hundred and ten dollars round trip out of SFO or Oakland, it's costing them almost three hundred dollars. That's a big jump. So it's just something to consider, and I can tell you, the state PTA, I am going to the legislative conference. You want to meet politicians, come with me to the PTSA conference. The California State PTA will be right there at the state Capitol. Hello, meet, meet all legislators or you want, until you're blue in the face. And, but one of the things that they do and they govern as the president is they tell us, when we sign on to say we want to be the president of the PTA, we understand that there's going to be some costs that we may have to endure, and that means splitting those costs. We get fifty percent of reimbursement of those costs when it comes down to travel and going to different conferences and things to help us do what we do in the schools. And I think that take money out of our, out of the kids and serving our, serving the kids is really a disproportionate thing, and I really think we need to reconsider that. Not to mention, I don't know how we can vote on something which is a discussion item.
Okay. Next item is trustee Diane Gibson-Cray brought up flexing staff, staff hours after 10:00 PM board meetings.
Well, this actually comes from my year of being president. Ms. Anello had a three-two contract, and so I told her constantly, after we had meetings that ended late, and she started at seven o'clock in the morning and she went home at nine, nine-thirty at night, you should flex your time the next day and come in later. The three-two contract, she wasn't comfortable with it for obvious reasons. And I think we just need to memorialize that the staff is, starts at seven or seven-thirty. Here it is, eight-thirty, we're well past 12 hours for them. I think as a board, we should encourage them, the city council, if I, memory serves me correct, on a city council night, they will come in at noon the next day and they will, or they will come in later that day. They know what's on the agenda, but 12, 15-hour days is not good for anybody.
Is this just around board meetings you're referring to, just for board meetings?
I don't know what else they do in their lives. Other meetings they have.
Because I always thought that they get to flex anyway, that's not the case?
When you're, you're, when you get your contract approved by three-two, you're, you're going to be here 24/7 if you can. That's just my personal opinion, but I did strongly encourage flexibility, and she's the leader, and what will happen is her staff will follow her lead. I'm just saying, I think asking this much of our employees is, is a little much.
Superintendent Anello, do you have any thoughts on that?
I'm going to go take a nap, I'll be right back. Sorry. You know, I'm inclined to, yeah, just keep on going, and we work weekends, we do all of those things. Typically, I find in senior staff, they don't give themselves permission to flex their own hours. I mean, it, it's just not something that, they're, we're used to working very long hours and they want to be here when the kids are here, so it sometimes is difficult for them to and for myself to kind of get that through. they wanna be here when the kids are here, so it's sometimes it's difficult for them to, and for myself, to, um, kind of get that through that I won't be at, at school while the kids are here. So, kind of wanting to know the boards. I will, I will be, it, it is sometimes very difficult to come in after four hours. You know, if a board member, if the board meeting ends at eleven, you, you clean up, you go home, you turn right back around in four hours. You're not always at your sharpest.
You land the two hours thinking about what happens.
And you're not always at your sharpest. And that would be a concern because, you know, senior staff is paid for the, um, difficulty of the decisions and the complexity of the issues which they, um, deal with, not necessarily the hours that they work, but they have a tendency to, um, try to deal with very complex and difficult issues, um, maybe, and work long, long hours, which isn't always a great combination.
Well, I certainly don't want anybody operating heavy equipment.
Right. I promised that one. Yeah. Wouldn't, wouldn't know how.
So I'm just curious, um, what, what other boards do with their staff and how it works in other districts and what happens with, um, senior staff and, and people that have to be at board meetings? Because I, I think we end really, from what I've heard, some people are there till twelve and one. I don't know if that's true, but I, I, and, um, I think we try to get out early. So, yeah.
Well, the prior superintendent was very good at flexing the, the hours. And I'm the one who added that. You know, you're, he had, um, the support of the board. It was, you know, five-oh. Um, it's been an interesting couple of years and I'm the one that added in the three-two. I hope you don't mind, Ms. Anello, but I really think.
It's always a good reminder. Thank you. Just kidding.
Yeah, that's okay. But I just really think we need to just provide the confidence that she should know when to flex and flexing is okay. I just don't know if that has been said or said well enough.
I don't mind it being said. I think it's a good idea that you know that, that's how we feel. But I don't, I don't think we can go much further than that. We can't enshrine it because you never know when it's gonna be a late meeting and when it isn't. And it's, you, you've gotta schedule, you already have appointments for the next day, so.
And that's all I was looking for, just the, um, the board would be supportive of, of your actions if you.
But I did.
Came in at, you know, we left at eleven-thirty and you came in at even nine o'clock. That would be unusual. But, yeah, just so you'd have that confidence. And then I think it would trickle down to the other exhausted people at the dais.
And I, I think typically there's always someone appointed to be in charge. There's always another associate staff in charge if you're flexing or coming in later, so. Well.
Well, and they're always available by phone, even if they're doing their laundry at nine o'clock in the morning, I'm sure they're gonna answer, uh, phone call or text.
Yeah, but I, I think I'm gonna look into how other districts do it with senior staff. I'm just curious about what they do with their board meetings. And I'm, I'm curious about how it works and would like more information about it. I think it's a, a good idea. I do know other, other staff that do flex and do things like work at home, et cetera, et cetera. And they don't quite make as much money as our senior staff, but I knew people do, do flex and they do work at home, so.
So those are a couple of different things. Um, not necessarily around board meetings, but in most districts that I've been in, not just senior staff, but exempt employees, there's these, um, either written policy or unwritten where you don't get paid overtime, but if you have to leave for a doctor's appointment, something of that nature, then you, you know, you don't have to account for that. There's that flexibility in that way. And I think that's basically what you're looking at. There used to be an old-time rule that was four hours or more. Um, you couldn't, or you weren't really being treated as an exempt employee. That's kind of gone away in the last few years, but that's kind of the rule of them that you still see in most board policies.
Okay.
And I think, you know, it, it, I'll be honest, it works both ways. I just thought back to the last two weeks and I think there's only been one day that I haven't had a work function. So I, and I think it all comes out if you want to do an hourly rate with senior staff. I know they attend quite a few night functions as well. On Saturdays and Sundays.
So I just wanted her to have the confidence that this is something, especially after, um, concerns with a, another employee that we had prior to this board.
Okay. Uh, item number thirteen, resolutions for first reading, none. Item fourteen, resolutions for immediate action. Resolution number two thousand sixteen seventeen hyphen twenty-four, the levying collection of level-one school facilities fees.
This is a follow-up to the hearing earlier. We asked that you take action.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, Mrs. Vinsone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, resolutions for second reading and actions, none. Board policies for first reading. Board policy ninety-two hundred, limits of board member authority.
So I'd like to introduce this one. As you recall, um, previous board, not made up of these, all of you, there were, was a board member who had some concerns about this policy. We pointed out that it's the same policy as recommended by CSBA and had been adopted by, um, every other district and a county that we were aware of once we did some research. Um, it basically outlines what's in government code and education code. It just memorializes it. This, um, members then wanted to change just some of the wording because maybe some of the perception by the community, they, they were perceiving it to be something that it wasn't necessarily in, intended to be. We have before you, I've incorporated the changes, thank you, trustee Vinsone, um, offered. And I would also like to, um, ask that based on public comments that we had last week and just sort of really considering that, again, we took CSBA sample and then changed it. I would ask that, um, the board consider moving this forward. I'd like to move it forward, but striking out that last sentence in five, um, about board members visiting their child's classroom. I don't think it's necessary for a board member to feel that they have to let me know, um, that they're volunteering in their child's classroom. So, um, it, when I bring it back for a second reading, I'd like to bring it back with that strike through.
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think it caused some people.
Yeah.
Confusion.
Unnecessarily.
Okay, if we have consensus on that, we'll move to item number seventeen, board policies for second reading and action. Board policy ninety-two forty, board development.
Wanted to thank, oh, go ahead.
Yes.
Before we, before we do that, sorry, Walter, I just wanted to take a look and say, um, I, so it is okay for board members that are continuing as community members to participate at their child's school, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, and we don't need to spell that out. I just want to be clear. Okay, thank you.
This is talking about seated board members.
Yes, thank you.
Um, board, so our board policy for second reading, it's board policy ninety-two forty. Thank you to Ms. Crystal Sawyer White. She came forward with a request, um, following her election to attend training. And we were all kind of caught off guard because we did not have a policy. So we took a look at what the California School Boards Association recommended. Um, and we've, then we also had discussion, as you recall, at our last meeting and have incorporated those changes. And that's what you see before you today.
And so I just want to say that I know we're waiting for policy updates from CSBA. And I just thought that maybe this was one in there, but if we've never had, had it, then thank you.
It is. With, with the revisions that were for the board.
On this one, I do have some revisions I'd like to suggest.
Yes, please.
I printed you a copy. I can print it for everybody to be within the brownout. But, um, I would like to recommend on item number two B, okay, where it says, "In the event a board member wishes to attend a conference or training in excess of the budget amount, then we can add in, the board member is responsible for the excess amount without board approval. If the board member would like to request that the excess amounts be paid by the district, he or she may ask the board to place it on the agenda."
Okay.
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 Makes sense.
Have anyone brought that?
Number C, um, everything up to, uh, individual board members' conference training travel budget is non-transferable amongst other board members and must be used in the fiscal budget year. Carryover to the following budget year is not allowed. This comes from my marketing stint. Other restrictions may apply. So anybody have any objections to that one?
Non-transferable.
Non-transferable, when you can't carry it over?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And then this is kind of what we talked about. Board members are responsible for signing up for conferences and training sessions, making their own transportation arrangements, and will be reimbursed using the same process as AUSD employees. I think we discussed that we could pay the conference or event fee through the, through your assistant, but the rest will be on our own. This just memorializes that. So, those are my suggestions.
And I have one other. It says effective days of March eighth should be the start of the next year.
I would agree with that.
Fiscal year?
Yes.
The next fiscal year. Yeah, that's great.
I think those are good amendments. Um, you could probably add even more, but I think you, you just, where would you stop then? I mean, you could probably, you know, like the point that was brought up tonight, I think it was a legitimate point. Obviously, we would trust that none of us here would use an inordinate amount of funds. If we find out that a certain date at a conference is a ridiculous date in terms of the costs of the hotels and so on, I would trust that all of us would have the discretion to say, maybe I should just hold off on this. But I mean, I don't think we have to put every little thing in language here.
I would agree with that. And I would also like to say that most citizens are requiring their board to have some knowledge. So you make good decisions as it relates to, um, how our district is operating and as it relates to making sure our budget is managed. So I think that when I look at the comparison, we're behind the eight ball as a board on training when we compare ourselves to what other school districts are doing. And we're not trying to catch up, but we do want to be relevant. So thank you for this policy.
You know, and I have one other one. Um, and number D, I think the exception should be CSBA because Nancy does a great job of getting us the hotels the minute it opens. And I don't want to lose that. And by the way, um, I did ask our historian, Claire Smith, um, about prior trainings. And she said, "The only ones that ever taken the Masters in Governance were Garia Gopin, Gopian and Joyce Sealer," just so you guys know. I had never heard about the program. Again, we weren't looking to educate ourselves because our policy had been that we went to CSBA. And so, anyway, now we all learned something new. Thank you, Ms. Sawyer White.
And I mentioned it at a previous meeting, but just to rehash that, we also, um, stopped even going to CSBA for a few years.
And we stopped her paying the fee to it. Yeah.
So, you know, that was maybe the other extreme. I think this is a happy balance. Uh, do I hear a motion to approve this?
With changes?
With changes.
With changes.
Yes, with all the changes, um, as outlined by trustee Gibson Gray and others.
And I can give you this copy.
I ask that we approve board policy ninety-two forty.
Forwarded by Mrs. Vinsone. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. White. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Board policy ninety-two forty carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, information anticipation of future action, none. Future agenda items from board members?
Uh, yes, this is where I'd like to put in that we need to figure out how that twenty-two some odd million is, is gonna be allocated, how much for technology, et cetera, et cetera. And then one other item, and it's not immediate, and I know it's a big task, and I did miss, mention it to Ms. Anello. And looking at the, um, the warrant list, um, there's PG&E is all over the board. There was eighty-six thousand to Deer Valley High School. That has solar. There are some things I'm just not understanding in the PG&E. Some of the sites that have solar, they're down to like fifteen hundred dollars. I like that. But some sites that have solar are still seventeen, eighteen thousand. So it's not, it's gonna be, Chris Lerman, actually, I'd asked him to do it. It'll be a big undertaking, so I'm not expecting it right away.
Yes, I was gonna say, Chris was asked by, uh, a few board members to take a look at our, um, electricity and how much we're spending at each site and our rates and, um, what happened with all of our solar savings, et cetera, et cetera. And so the only other thing I'm gonna say is that I thought, did we all, did we make a decision about use of our facilities for community groups? Did we already, it feels like we keep, that keeps coming up. Did we make a decision about that and what the fees would be? I know Mr. Lerman had also worked on that.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So future agenda is facility use fees?
So you're concerned that we're over or underpricing them?
Some are concerned that we're overpricing, but there's an additional concern of not using our high schools, our, um, high school fields and, uh, resources, the concessions. There's some concern.
Yeah, we, we heard this a couple of years ago, but it's probably good to bring it back. And of course, we can't charge more than what it costs to, um, so the facilities expenses, actually, if we looked at them, they may go up because.
Correct.
Yeah, we haven't looked at them a long time.
That's why we have to look at. But I know Mr. Lerman did a little extra work in making sure that, um, permits and things for use having to do with food. I know he did some behind-the-scenes work. Superintendent Anello can attest to that when we're talking about it. But I think he did some cleanup work. And so I think it's important that, you know, the board kind of have that info.
I had requested at a previous meeting, superintendent goal review, so.
We were planning on bringing that for your next.
I figured you might be.
Board meeting, the twenty-second.
And Mr. Sanchez, if, if it's possible, get in that before the end of the year on, uh, the progress of behavioral interventions. I see Deer Valley's got, is it Pride? Is that the name of their program?
I can include that as part of the superintendent's goal update. It may take more than one meeting for me to cover all of it, but I, I definitely see that fitting in there.
Anything else? Item twenty-one, additional comments. Individuals address the board. No, we don't have any of those. Don't see any. And item twenty-two, reports from board members relative to memberships, other organizations or district business. Anyone wishing to speak on that?
Um, Mr. President.
Yes.
I recently visited Deer Valley High School and I was really impressed. I, I had, they gave me their. The principal, Principal Gardner gave me, um, a folder in reference to tracking ninth graders up to twelfth grade. And I was not aware. My daughter graduated two thousand and seven. They did not have this. And he's done a phenomenal job. In addition, I'm going back. He asked me, he wants to give me a tour of the site. And I also witnessed, um, he has a certain, um, ritual that he does. He plays music, like around one-ten or so, to get the students out of the hallway and to get the tardiness, um, you know, decrease as far as that is concerned. So I was really surprised it's changed since two thousand and seven. And I think he's doing a great job.
Great.
Yes, I had mentioned that I saw Deer Valley was rated, uh, by Great Schools as, uh, superior school. Kind of seven out of ten, which is pretty good. I mean, five is obviously way above average. Tended Black History Month at Park Middle School. Mrs. Vinsone was there. Had the Ninth Annual Percussion Discussion Event yesterday. Had about fourteen hundred third graders attend. Rick Cowerher, the manager of the El Campanillo, commented, uh, he included me in the conversation. He said, "A lot of people have aged." I was one of them. But he said, "Ken Bergman hasn't." He said, "Ken Bergman still bangs those drums." Amazing. He does a hundred and eighty concerts a year outside of what he does at the school. And outside of the fact that he, uh, is on the rescue team for, uh, up in, up Lake Tahoe. Snow rescue, skier, so he's quite a guy.
How'd you avoid crowd control yesterday?
How did we avoid it?
Yeah, because I, I got stuck with that.
Oh, you did? There you go. Anyone else wishing to report on memberships or activities?
So, um, trustee Hack and I participated in the Black History Month celebration at Deer Valley High School. And it was very well-attended and they did a very fine job with all of their presentations. And, um, also the Career Resource Fair, I think most of us were there for that. That was, was nice to talk to Edge Academy students and, um, you know, the student from the Bay family, very articulate, very excited about, um, the Law Academy winning an award. And then also the Venture Capitalist Business Teams were there. I was looking for the device that they actually, was it the, um, where you wake up? There's some watch or timer or something that they made to help students get out of bed. So I feel like our students are making, uh, a lot of progress. And I love the robot. The robot that they had out there, that was actually quite fascinating. And I'm hoping some of our. And I'm hoping some of our students will be able to participate in the Contra Costa County Science Fair where students are recognized and districts are recognized and just kinda help put Antioch on the map for something good, something else positive, so, good stuff.
Any other comments? Future meetings, item number twenty-three. Our next meeting is March twenty-second and then April twenty-sixth, follows that. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Yes, said with great enthusiasm. Yes, do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you all for coming.
Thanks for doing it.
I'm staying.